Public hearing agenda, December thirteenth, twenty, twenty-two, five thirty P. M. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
And Councilman Wells.
Public hearing item number one.
In ordinance to approve an expanded conditional use request by Haven La France owner to allow for a mobile home located at three six zero five Della Randall Road per survey by Gilbert Sullivan, RLS dated three one seven eight, zoned RM dash two, Z dash two zero two two dash zero nine dash zero zero one one one, with the following conditions: This is a personal right and expires upon a change in ownership of the property from the person originally granted the conditional use. It meet, number two, it meets all the requirements in the Unified Development Code, Article Three, Section Three dash four, and number three, the survey submitted is signed and recorded for the official lot of record, recommended approval by the zoning commission, five to zero, Lacey Landrum.
The zoning commission originally heard this for public hearing on October twentieth. This was then to be introduced at the city council on October twenty-fifth. That night it was tabled at the request of the owner making this application. So then it was introduced on November fifteenth, and then tonight we're here for public hearing. This is, as it describes, an expanded conditional use of this area. The existing zoning of it is for multifamily. It is in Council District Five. It is surrounded by a lot of vacant property. This is an area that has not been yet developed. A lot of the lots are still wooded there. But to the east of this lot, there was one gentleman, Don Zarangue, who is an adjacent property owner at one fifteen Mallard Drive and one seventeen Mallard Drive, who came to the meeting to voice his opposition to this. You can see photos in the packet of the conditions of the wooded area surrounding and then of the multifamily that is mostly triplexes and duplexes to the east of it there on Mallard Drive.
Anyone from the public here on this matter? Step to the microphone, please. Give us your name and your address.
My name is Don Zarangue. I represent the owners on Mallard Drive, one fifteen Mallard, one sixteen Mallard, and one seventeen Mallard. I'm here to speak in opposition of the expanded condition use on thirty-six oh five Della Randall Road. I represent the owners, as I mentioned before. Approving the use of the property for a mobile home is kind of contrary to the direction that the city of Hammond has been taking in the past few years. Next to this location is Woodbridge subdivision. Across the street are the duplexes and triplexes I represent. There's also a single-family dwelling on that same street, and yes, there is another mobile home at the dead end of that street, which has been at that location for a long time. It sits on a lot twice the size of the present lot that's being considered here tonight. And the front door faces the street, which is another variance requested. There's another, there's other narrow lots adjacent to this property, one on a market for sale, one recently purchased, probably waiting to see what happens in this meeting here today. Approving the expanded conditional use will lay the foundation for additional requests using this approval as justification for future mobile home approval requests at this, at this site. Essentially, by approving this request, you start in a trailer park in the city. Please do not approve this conditional use and stop the encroachment of mobile homes in the city of Kenner.
Excuse me, sir, can you come back up here a second? You said the mobile home in the rear and the back, they've been there for a long time. Do you know if that was there before they annexed that in, in the city, or was it?
I, I'm sorry, I can't answer that. I know that Mr. Stewart has owned that property for twenty years.
Okay. Do you know when it was annexed, so Lacey, when we brought it up last meeting? Did you find out?
The only records that we have is a plat map of seventy-eight, and I did not have a chance to go through all of the ordinances to try to find the one that would show it. I can try to search while we're here.
Yeah. How's the utilities work over there? I brought up.
There is water and sewer. I did verify that. That is tapped in, and that's both our water and, and our city sewer.
Ran on that gravel road in the back over there?
We service that area, yes.
Okay.
I'd like to also mention that I did receive information from the president of the Woodbridge Homeowners Association, and the association is in opposition of the, of approving this expanded use condition.
Anyone else from the public? Step to the mic, please. Give your name and address.
I'm Haven La France, from thirty-six oh five Della Randall Road. A house and home. We brought the property. We told that we should be able to get our, our trail on there because they have one back there. I don't know why they're opposing that. We good people, and we ain't gonna bring no trouble. We came here after Katrina. We stood up here two years, never had a problem out with it. Y'all ain't gonna have a problem out with it once we get out of there, you know what I mean? It's already modified for, uh, my, I mean, if they think they gonna keep me out regardless of what I'm coming on, that's my problem.
Let me ask you something. Let me ask you something. You said they, they were telling you that, that, uh, you, you wouldn't have any problem. Who was that? Who, who said that?
Jordan, Jordan. Real estate name is Jordan, Jordan. I suppose I got his name right here on my microphone, man. He told me I shouldn't have no problem with getting my trail on.
I was just curious that if, if, uh...
Hold up, let me get his name.
That'd be like the realtor or someone from the city?
The realtor.
The realtor.
His name is Jordan Salino.
Okay. Well, 'cause, you know, that might be a, a little more of a civil matter right there with, with, if that guy told you something that wasn't true now, and then if the city may have told you something, or permitting or anything, but I mean, officials, you know, if they would have told you, that would have been something different, but it's a shame that somebody told you that, you know, and, and didn't, you know, check into it before they advised you that way. But, um, but anyway, I just wanted to ask that. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other comments from anyone from the council?
It's, this property's in District, in District Five. I have constituents that are in opposition of it. I myself am in opposition of it. You know, we, we have zoning, we have zoning in the city that does not allow for, for mobile homes. When you look at this area, it's really not conducive for a mobile home there, and I think it's the general consensus of the people that live in that area that they want, that they do not want mobile homes there, and they want to see it continue to be developed much like it is on Mallard Drive.
I forgot to speak. The two people that stayed there, the one in the house and the one in the trail, I talked to them, and they told me, tell them, tell them, they say there was no problem. If you come here, you have to call them, or y'all, y'all have their address and everything. They told me I have to move, they have no problem. They have, they have options. The two people that stayed there already, that's on the, the only people that's on the road, they told me it's cool, 'cause everybody else, the, uh, apartments that he represent, back is to the property, so I don't see why that's a problem, because I'm behind them. The other people, they way over there. I'm way away from them. I'm way about to do that, told me I have to move, I'm over there with them, so I don't see why they have a problem.
It's about the precedent that you sent here today that's concerned.
Well, you know, that, we keep, we're getting a lot of more mobile home requests throughout the city. I think it's something we really need to address. You know, the planning and zoning went to their, their board, they voted at five and O recommendation, so, you know, I think we need to really make it clear, you know, from here on out, like, where are we going in vision of the city with these mobile homes, 'cause, you know, it's, it's, um, you know, if there's zonings are in place and it's not allowed, we need to really stand behind that unless it's an actual really hardship. And so, you know, it's, it's unfortunate you were told that, but, you know, the zoning on there states, what, modular homes, I think, modular homes allowed? Or is that, or is it just?
It's only in certain RS eleven.
So, he made a comment about that. I didn't know if, if that was that zoning or not.
There's a difference between modular and manufactured and mobile.
Yeah. I know the difference of all that, Lacey. I'm just asking, this zoning, is it no for just mobile homes, or is it no for all the other ones? That's what my question was.
No for sure. It's no on mobile homes.
Okay.
And manufactured homes. We can check on modular.
Okay. All right.
Public hearing number two.
In ordinance to approve a request by Locasio LLC to re-subdivide parcel two dash A dash one into parcels two dash A dash one dash A and two dash A dash one dash B of the Locasio subdivision located at nineteen fifty-five Southwest Railroad Avenue, and to accept the dedication of Locasio Drive and the cul-de-sac in accordance with a preliminary survey by David Patterson, PLS, dated ten four twenty-two, zoned C dash H, sub dash two zero two two dash ten dash zero zero one nine eight, recommend approval by the planning commission, five and O, Lacey Landrum.
This was heard by public hearing for the Planning and Zoning Commission on November tenth. Was introduced to the council meeting at our last meeting on November fifteenth, and then it's here for final hearing tonight. This is, as it describes, it's a pretty straightforward subdivision. The reason that it's coming to you, normally a subdivision wouldn't, of this size, just go into two lots, wouldn't come to you, but this is coming to you to dedicate the roadway. The road was, and I know this question had come up, the road was originally built to service that area, both for Chick-fil-A and racetrack, and it was a private road at that time. It was part of the Chick-fil-A parcel, and so that's why it's now being, coming before you for dedication. It was accepted into the, like, the bond, the performance bond was released on May twentieth, twenty fourteen, so it has, had stood some years of time already. The city engineer did do a, a look at, a review of the roadway and the conditions, and does agree that it was built to the city's standards, and that it is in good condition and acceptable for the city to take into its inventory. There was some original discussion about the cul-de-sac and about if it could become a, a little bit different configuration, and that's what you might see in the differences between one of the surveys that had been included earlier. This is the final survey that they will be taking in, so it does include the cul-de-sac as a whole.
Anyone from the public on this matter? Any questions or concerns from anyone from the council? Public hearing, item number three.
In ordinance to approve a request by Eric Long, owner, to allow for a mobile home located at one four zero zero Apple Street per survey by Richmond Krabs, PLS, dated six three nineteen, zoned RS dash three, Z dash two zero two two dash one zero dash zero zero one one four, with the following conditions: This is a personal right and expires upon change in ownership of the property from the person originally granted the conditional use. It meets all the requirements in the Unified Development Code, Article Three, Section Three dash four, and number three, the survey submitted is signed and recorded for the official lot of record, recommended approval by zoning commission, five and O, Lacey Landrum.
This was also heard on November tenth by the zoning commission, introduced at the last council meeting on November fifteenth, and is up for public hearing and final adoption for tonight. It does have the three conditions that technically usually apply to our mobile home placements. It is located in Council District One. It is a vacant site. The vacant site has been recently cleared and prepared for some type of thing to go there, whether that's a mobile home or whether that's different construction down the road. Once combined, there is enough frontage along Apple Street for a hundred and thirty feet, so this one did not need. I know there was mention before of the front door variance. The variances are granted and end with the Planning and Zoning Commission. They don't come to the council. That's something that the Planning and Zoning has final decision over. But the placement of the mobile home itself, since it is a zoning change, does come to the council. That's why you have one of the items and not both. But this one did not require that variance because of the lot width. On two sides are single-family homes, to the north and to the south, as described there, and you'll see those photos in the packet in addition. To the west side is actually two vacant lots, and then to the east side are currently vacant lots. The east side does border, though, and is adjacent to a proposed mobile home area. That's the only designations that we really have, and again, they're proposed because they were adopted as part of the future land use map and as discussion of the city's master plan. So those are the only areas, that's why these, anytime a mobile home is placed, come before you. There are a few other places listed right there at the bottom of the front page of the staff report where there have been adjacent to a proposed mobile home areas. There's three other places in that specific kind of area where we have, we have placed mobile homes. This is in flood zone A and will require an elevation certificate, but those have been granted for mobile homes in the past. I don't think there's any other variables to discuss with this.
Lacey, my only question is, this is styled as an ordinance to approve a request, the other one is a expanded conditional use request in the agenda. They're both expanded conditional use.
They are, yes.
Is it all mobile homes are expanded?
Yes. I'm sorry, that should be, yes, an expanded conditional use.
Just making sure there's no difference there.
Yeah. That should be an expanded conditional use. That's why it has the three restrictions that go with it.
And it says it in the packet. I'm just, on the agenda, it doesn't. So just clarifying.
That was my fault, because probably the language that I quickly sent over to Lisa as a placeholder in between our two meetings is, is probably what happened there. The ordinance itself is correct on the second page, and that would include the expanded conditional use.
So this one is in the zoning where mobile homes are not allowed, but it's next door to the ones that are allowed?
That's correct. The property to the east of it is in a proposed mobile home area. It is not, this, this particularly lot is not in the proposed mobile home area, but the lot just adjacent to it, to the east, is, is kind of a large area right there that's proposed mobile home. And there are some in and around the area.
Did he have a hard, would the hardship was, you know, for the variance, or what was his hardship besides him owning the property and wanting to put a mobile home on it? Did he, has he always owned the property, or is it something?
I, I don't know. Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah.
My name is Eric Long, and I just purchased that property on fourteen hundred Apple Street. And I'm trying to just get a place for my kids, get them a start. I raised them to be a good kid. They all work, they work hard, guard fearing kids.
Yeah.
So, and we talked to everyone around in the neighborhood in there about that place, so we're just trying to get something from the kids to get started.
And I would like to say, yes, it is a hardship because she's in a mobile trailer park now, and she has a little girl, and we want to put her in an environment closer to us so we can be, you know, there around her, a guardian, so we can be, you know, there to care for her and so forth, so, but other than that, you know, we purchased it, we're gonna see till we can help out here and leave them something so they have someone that can call they own.
Mm-hmm.
Kip, have you received any feedback in the community, since this is your district?
No, I did not, and I actually attended the planning and zoning meeting that night when this was brought up, and no one from the area opposed or brought any concern. I haven't received a call or anything on it.
There was not anything, I should have mentioned this, I'm sorry, earlier, there was not anything, it is in the staff report and in the packet, there was not anyone at that meeting, but the property that is to the south of it did send an email, belonged to Reginald Reed, and his son receives the tax notices, so that you'll see the email comes on behalf of an attorney out of state.
That's the only communication from this person.
That's correct. Well, they called when the, when the original sign got posted, Mr. Reed called and asked some questions about it, and then said that he would be referring it to his son, so.
Well, it, my, my, my thing here is, is that it, it continues to be, you know, mobile homes continuing to be brought up with, with issues that are in the zonings that do not allow them. It's nothing to do with anybody personally with their, what they have, you know, their families or anything else, but it, you know, it'd be nice, you know, to just look into somebody's zonings, what the property's owned before purchasing the property, well, not to see if it's allowed or not, because I know nobody on the street says anything. Well, if that's the case, it's just need to rezone the entire area and allow mobile homes to be in the whole area. So, I mean, at some point in time, there were maps created with zonings to try to do different things in the city and different upgrades, and, and try to do different things, the whole city planning map, and so if you keep deviating from that, eventually you just, you're gonna just say, well, I mean, there's no need to have any zonings anywhere, so, you know, so I, I think the concern here isn't nothing to do with you or anyone that comes up here about wanting a mobile home, but, you know, at some point, you know, you gotta look at the zonings and the restrictions on them and see what's allowed, what's not allowed, and, and where do you want to go as a city? If we want to just continue, like, these were made up before, obviously, we, we got on a council from years before, and so we gotta figure out what direction we want to go to in the city with letting mobile homes. They're allowed in a parish anywhere, but in the city they have codes and, and zonings for different areas, you know? So that's, that's all, that's all I was asking about the hardship, if there's, you know, some, some type of a, you know, real hardship on the property, maybe a changed zoning when you bought it, you know, it was allowed mobile homes, and then it was changed and you stuck with it, and now you got a hardship because of the zoning change after you purchased it, and, and you had intentions to put a mobile home on it. So, I mean, that's, that's, you know, to me, that's kind of a, a real hardship for someone, so.
Well, we just, we, if we could afford a nice home, we'll put it there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we build our own homes, we just trying to get a place for my kids to get started.
Absolutely, yeah.
Looking around, what harm it's gonna bring, you look around in that area?
Yeah.
I mean, we gonna put it, no, we're not gonna put trash there. I mean, we're just trying to make a life, you know?
And I think that affordability question is what was discussed with the planning and zoning at their last work session, because we had an agenda that had three mobile home requests on it, and I think with the rising home prices, with the rising loans forecasted, you're gonna continue to see some of this. And so they had a conversation with the city attorney about, you know, what, what are some things to kind of consider and look at, with also, you know, meeting our fair housing rules and making sure that, you know, we have an accommodating city, and so that's why, that's why we're trying to point out when there's mobile homes in the area, or when they're adjacent to the proposed area, or when they're within the area, or if they're not in the area at all. We're trying to make sure that, that you understand kind of what the dynamics of that, it looks like.
No, I understand, but I think we need to look at it harder, and if there's a lot of mobile homes in there, we need either go with the planning and zoning and look at, do they want to go and rezone that and put mobile homes on there, or we need to find a section at town where we want to put, I don't think it's fair to say where or whatnot, who gets to put a mobile home or not, if, if the rules are rules, and for this side, or if it's in this area with mobile homes, and this area don't have many mobile homes. I mean, we gotta, we gotta figure out a situation, because most of the, most of the planning and zonings, all, a lot of them, it's all about mobile homes, variance, variance, variances, so, you know, at, at some point, it's just gonna be all mobile homes everywhere, so we either have a, we either have a section that allow them or don't allow them, which we do have sections that allow them and sections that don't. So whoever made the maps up probably made the maps up for a reason that way, 'cause that's what they do, so.
There's a lot of current mobile homes, too, that are not in the proposed mobile home areas.
Yeah.
So there are a lot of mobile homes that are already kind of out there, spread out, that are not necessarily in the proposed mobile home area.
Yeah.
There's a lot of variables to weigh.
Oh, yeah, there, there is, but I think it's something that, you know, probably need to look at going forward.
I think that's, yeah.
Because it's every other week or so or two, and, and, I mean, I think it's something important that we need to get a grip on.
That's, that was the flavor of the Planning and Zoning Commission as well. That's why they invited Andre, and that's why they're probably going to be contacting you all to kind of look at those maps and figure out, do we want to expand them? Do we want to modify them? How do we want to go forward?
'Cause, I mean, the price of homes going up, price of mobile homes are going up, too. Everything's going up. I mean, it's just, it's, it's not, can't get a, can't get a, it's hard to even get a affordable mobile home these days. I mean, everything is going up. I mean, I'm in the industry, I mean, everything's high right now. I mean, it's sometimes easier to get a house than a mobile home, depending on what the situation is, so.
That's true, but my daughter, she already has a mobile home.
Yeah.
She could just move on over home on that lot, which you purchased for her.
So that, that leads to one of my questions, and, you know, expanded conditional use, as it says here, it, it expires at the, in a change of ownership, so if you were to sell it or whatnot. And in this one, we have Mr. Long as the owner, but the expanded conditional use is for the daughter.
Right. And my other two kids, whatever.
And I, I don't take that I'm saying you're gonna do anything different, but this is just an example of, is it for the ownership of Mr. Long, and then if Mr. Long passes and it goes to his daughter, well, that's a change in ownership, but we have put her name in it, so now that may be an issue as well. So, I mean, we're kind of muddling this up.
They, they are both okay. The challenge is if, and that's why her name is also in here, if it does go to a different child, then it comes back. If it does go to a different owner, it comes back. So those two are the, the cleared names, so to speak, if this gets approved. Any, any other names trigger a review again?
And then the other issue is, this is, for example, say this one passes, Mr., say something happens to that mobile home, and it, and it burns down, and it has to be replaced, then this, because he still owns it, he can put one up, another one up, we don't have to do this again, right?
That, that would, that would be correct, but we would have to make sure that it still met the UDC and the HUD guidelines.
Right. So the, there's, there's a lot of mobile homes in the city of Hammond. Some of them are in really, really bad condition, and, I mean, I don't love the expanded conditional use, I don't think most people do, but the idea is, once there's a change in ownership, it goes back to where it should be, and hopefully you can get some of these older mobile homes...
That's correct.
...no longer occupied, 'cause some of them are not even safe. But if we continuously give expanded conditional uses and put new mobile homes in, then we're continuing the cycle. And so, not to ask to you guys, but something's gotta be figured out with that. I agree. I mean, we're all saying the same thing. I don't know the answer. Somebody's gotta come up with the answer.
That's exactly right, and that's, that's exactly what I was getting at, so, I mean, she hit it on the head, and then that's, that's kind of where, where we're at with this. It's nothing personal, but, you know, it's not gonna go away, and it's not gonna figure itself out, so if we need to have a meeting at some point, have, you know, first year or however we want to handle it, but I, I think we really need to figure out what, what are we, what are we doing with that, 'cause the majority of the variances, the majority of issues are, not issues, but requests for mobile home placements on variance of every, you know, of different parts.
Yes, with no, with no disrespect, the same with, with a house that's being built. It could be, it could deteriorate as well, just like a trailer, it could be dilapidated as well, you know, so.
Oh, yeah.
So the home's in the area, it's old, so how could you, I mean, it'll look better.
I agree with that. But a lot of, a lot of mobile homes that are very old, or even not as old as some structural houses, they deteriorate faster. I mean, that's just a given, the, the...
Construction.
Construction is not...
It's different.
So, but here's my, I just want to make a point, 'cause we're talking about a lot of things that are probably giving a lot of people concern. We have had consistently, this council has consistently granted them, if people aren't, if there's not a overwhelming outrage against them, or someone speaking out against it, and if they're somewhat in the same area. I don't think it's fair to people to change what we have been doing, because now we see a bunch of them coming, and we gotta do something. Well, we need to get something in place and not change the way we're doing things before, you know, we can actually put something in place to give people guidance, and I think it also weighs a lot with me and the, the council person for the district and where it's going, 'cause if this was District Two, I would tell you right now, I'm not supporting it.
And, and another thing is, is, you know, it's been a talk, but I haven't been reached out by one time by Planning and Zoning to let me know that, hey, we having some issues, we need to really get on some things and, and discuss things, so, you know, when you get in five O votes coming to us, you know, it starts with planning and zoning, or planning and zoning, that's kind of in their department wheelhouse, that's why we have representatives on that, appointments on that board, and if, and if, and if they have some, some concerns, they need, need to not just support and, and vote on it, and then let us know. I mean, we need to, we all need to be aware of it and sign up, figure out what direction we want to go.
Well, they literally just had the work session where they had some conversation.
I'm not calling them out or anything, I'm just saying that, you know, we need communication here and, and get it done.
I think, I think everybody agrees.
And, you know, if everybody up here is fine with mobile homes, going all over the city, go for it. The planning and zoning, that's fine, it's, it's not my own, my call to make, but, like she said, like she said, Carly said, you, you can't really, you know, say it's fair to give one this one, you know, we've improved them, then stop at all of a sudden approving them, so, but that's gonna come somewhere down the road when you keep approving them, and here we are, so.
I think that was a main part of the concern that night at the planning and zoning meeting, it, that came up, that they were at a point where they were receiving a lot of requests now. It, that came up, that they were at a point where they were receiving a lot of requests now for the mobile homes and that they were gonna have a meeting and I see that they starting a discussion on it to see which way to head down the road with this. But again, this is in our, my district, and I didn't receive any feedback on it. I was at the Planning and Zoning meeting that night.
I'll say too, maybe to help start the conversation, I can send you, because this is something else that we reviewed in the meeting, was the proposed mobile home area maps, so that you could see where those are, where they relate to in your district. And that can kinda start this discussion. And then we'd be happy to help facilitate meetings starting in January to really nail down something.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sal Niccolosi, thirty-six oh seven Highway one ninety west. You know, it's a burden on people that, you know, everything is so expensive now. But from what I'm aware of, the city of Hammond has, or tried, or did they adopt, where the mobile homes was kinda being put on a, on a back burner, from what I'm aware of. Is that correct, Lacy?
Not necessarily on a back burner. It's that they have to come through an approval process. So, there are, there's not zoning, there's only one level zoning that we have where you can just go have them. And the vast majority of lots throughout the city do not allow that unless they come and go through the proposed mobile home area and then go through the process of having some extra review. And it's where we have this opportunity to ask these questions.
Well, I think this is the big issue, is that, you know, we have a lot of people want to come here and, you know, place a mobile home. Like, for instance, the first man that was up front here, he's the man who bought the property, told him that he could put a mobile home there. Now, that was kinda, you know, maybe misleading to the gentleman who bought the property, thinking he could put a mobile home there. So, from what I'm aware of and from what the city planners supposedly are doing now, is bringing, like you said, in certain sections maybe to have. But if you don't, if you don't stop it somewhere, it's just gonna continue. Because we have a lot of people in the previous years have been turned down for places, you know, for them to park their mobile homes. And some people are renting them out, and more than likely, the people that rent them out, you know, letting them deteriorate and everything else and making it look bad on everybody else. But I think the city is leaning more towards eliminating the mobile homes in the city limits from what I'm, you know, understanding. But I feel for the people that, that, you know, they got the mobile homes and they trying to, you know, either for their family or for themselves, you know, to, I think the city has got to get something together to make, either stop it or, like you said, delegate certain areas, you know, because you got mobile homes all over the city of Hammond. And the area I'm in, you gotta, you know, you got a two hundred thousand dollar home, then next door to it, you got a, you know, sixty thousand dollar trailer, eighty thousand dollar trailer. But a lot of this stuff was grandfathered in years ago.
Annexation, yes, yeah.
It was grandfathered in years ago, but just because it was grandfathered, now, they don't have that, that opportunity anymore. You know, when you buy a piece of property, you just gotta be aware of where you buying and who you buying from. You know, and I feel sorry for people that just take word, you know, for anybody. And, you know, we just, the city is expanding, is growing, southeastern is growing, and we all looking, you know, forward to growing too with everybody. But it's gotta come to a time and point where the, the city has got to make a decision on these mobile homes. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
My question, I thought I was on the lead, I just got news earlier that there would be something that could affect our subdivision, Lick Ridge subdivision regarding a trailer variance. And I don't know if this is the time to discuss that, but I know our councilman may have a little bit more information, that there was a trailer variance or deal you ran down. And they may not be.
Where at? Which subdivision?
This is for the deal you ran down.
That's that first one, Denali.
Y'all had already done it, it's fine, so I just.
We're, it's gonna come up for a vote, so that would be, you know.
I just have a request about it.
You can come back up whenever it comes up.
I'm sorry, I'm from the theater.
Thank you.
That's okay.
Just to clarify, so the zoning that allows mobile and manufactured homes is RS eleven A. There were a lot of properties on the outskirts that were perhaps annexed in at times by those. Most of those have been changed. I know Councilman DiVittorio had looked at his district, because we do have a few parcels that are outliers. They're odd that they're RS eleven A right in the middle of town.
Yeah.
So, that is some, that's the only zoning that we have that starts to allow it. You had also asked about modular homes. The other zonings do allow modular, but it's specifically to be off the chassis.
Okay.
So, that's the main difference.
All right. Yeah, I know we had this issue in front of Villas West. We had to get it rezoned, because it was a subdivision that was allowed for mobile homes. At some point, it was looked over. You know, some parts of my district was annexed into the city, was parish. So, they had allowed mobile homes in it, then they put it in the city. So, I mean, obviously, those were, you know, grandfathered in because of the situation, so, but yeah.
My name is Lynn Matthews. I got a question for y'all. The man say he's trying to put a home for his family. And I understand y'all got all the rules about people, property failure going down and all that. But have we noticed about all the new stuff going up? A lot of neighborhoods are being built with homes starting at three hundred thousand dollars. A lot of people cannot afford a three hundred thousand dollar house, four hundred thousand dollar house. Even the neighborhoods there, even houses that are already here are going for two hundred thousand dollars houses. I mean, they, they won't raise minimum wage. All everybody wants is a chance to have a home. Rent is now, if you rent an apartment, it starts at a thousand dollars a month. If not, fifteen hundred dollars a month. I mean, how do you expect the people to afford this stuff? They can't afford it living on minimum wage. So, now when they want a piece of the pie, the American pie, they just want someone to live. That's all they want is someone to live. That's it. They doing a piece of the American dream. They're not out here stealing. They out here working. Some of the jobs that some of us don't want, they out here working them jobs, trying to make a living. And all they want is something of their own. See, I got a daughter, finished college, graduated. She's a teacher. Because she's a teacher, she's not making enough money to really afford a whole place as a teacher. You know what I'm saying? But she's educating our students, but she can afford to live here. But she can teach here to educate our teacher, our students, our kids. But does she has a right to have a home? Does she have a right? Because literally, she cannot afford a fifteen hundred dollar a month apartment and get a car. She cannot afford it, because everything's too expensive. All we want is to have somewhere for us to call our own. We can't go out into the big four hundred thousand dollar neighborhood. We can't go out there, because they literally don't make enough money to go out there. So, they just want somebody on. And a lot of families have their own property. And they just wanna put something there so they can live there, so they can start to wait one day. They can't afford a four hundred thousand dollar house. You know what I'm saying? They could afford this, they could afford that. All they want is the opportunity. All this man wanna do is give his family opportunity. That's it. No more than what anybody else here wants for their own children, for their own kids, is the opportunity. That's it. That's all he wants to do. So, I don't see what the problem is for letting this man, give him opportunity, sort of throw all these rules and regulations about zoning and all of this. All he wants is the opportunity. See, I remember I came here when I tried to get a hardship. And I came with a hardship. But they kicked me out the door. It's enough, it's enough for all this. Come on now, give a man opportunity. That's all I ask. Give a man opportunity to do something for his children, so he can have a, for they can have a chance to start. Because I'm gonna be wanting an opportunity for my daughter too. If not, I'm gonna ask her to move and leave out of here and go somewhere where she can get opportunity in, taking our teachers out of the school system. That's all I got to say.
I think, Sal, to answer part of your statement which you had made, we had an issue a couple of months back that a person ended up purchasing some property, and his realtor told him that he could do X, Y, and Z with it. A lot of these folks that are purchasing their property are going off of what the realtor is telling them and not checking on the city side first to see exactly what they, what they could do. And that's part of the issue with some of this, they're running into that, dealing with their realtor. Anyone else on this one?
All right. Resolution number, I'm sorry, public hearing number four.
In accordance to approve a request by Christopher Ruffin, owner, to rezone Lot A, Block One of Pine Ridge Edition, located at seven one two Magazine Street, from RS dash three to MX dash N, in accordance with a survey by William Bodine. PLS dated one three one twenty-two, Z dash two zero two two dash zero five dash zero zero one zero, with the following conditions, no alcohol sales, no marijuana sales. Recommended approval by the zoning commission, five to zero, Lacey Landrum.
This was heard by the zoning commission on November tenth. It was actually heard at the meeting prior to that, and then they came back and had more discussion about it. It was referred to the city council November fifteenth, and then is up for final, final hearing and, public hearing and final adoption tonight. You'll see within your packet that these are, this, this particular case and the case that follows just after it, these are lots that are adjacent to one another. So, seven twelve and seven oh six is gonna be the next one. Around this area is, is a little bit of mixed. You'll see some single-family homes, you'll see some vacants, you'll see some mobile homes. It's a very mixed area at this intersection between Magazine Street and MC Moore. And what Mr. Ruffin is intending to do is to build on this corner, a small restaurant, mostly to-go food, no alcohol. And he has been adamant about no alcohol every time he has presented this, this option. Magazine Street is considered one of our larger collector streets. And so, what he's asking to do is to change his zoning from residential, single-family, three to mixed neighborhood. That would allow for restaurants, it also allows for office, other things like that. In some ways, you'll see in the, in the packet as well, a map that shows the other mixed-use commercial and mixed-use neighborhood that is in, in around the area. The larger zoning map kinda shows you that throughout kind of a two or three block radius. Additionally, there was a case that was pretty similar to this, where it started as an expanded conditional use and then it kind of went through layers of zoning throughout the years of being there. And that concerns a property that's to the south of this one on East Church. Similar kind of function though, wanting to do a small-to-go kinda restaurant and made changes incrementally throughout the years and is also at MXC now. So, with all those considerations, the zoning commission heard from a lot of people on these cases. You'll see again in the report, all the folks that are listed who attended the public hearing, that's on page two of this report, included many people in the surrounding area. He also put forward a petition of signatures supporting this change. That's included in your packet. There was one email received in opposition, and that individual also spoke at the first meeting. It is my understanding that there was a meeting facilitated by Councilman Andrews, and they came to an agreement about the no alcohol and the no marijuana sales in order for this rezoning to transpire. So, Mr. Ruffin is here, and others are here, I believe, to speak on behalf.
Step to the mic. Please give us your name and address.
Good evening. We are Larry and Mary Short. We are the owners of seven nineteen Magazine Street. And as she said, this did come before the planning zone before. And when it came before the planning zone before, it was voted no, three to two. And we were in agreement with that vote for the reason that they offered Mr. Ruffin a conditional permit that he could have the restaurant in a residential area and not be rezoned. But he refused. He said that he would come back. And he did. He came back and he added the lots side by side. It's not adjacent, but it's side by side, and it is directly in front of our property. And the next reason that we are in opposed to this and asking that you vote no is because the property right side of our house, on the northeast side, was given permission to change to a business for a restaurant. The restaurant did not make it. And they, because it was changed to business, then it became a full barroom right next door to our house. Then on the east-south side, across the street from us, someone was starting a sweet shop. And you all allowed it to become a business. The sweet shop did not make it. Now, it's a barroom. Now, Christopher is directly in front of us for a restaurant. We have no, we have no problems with that. But we have a problem if he decides that he does not want to live there anymore, which he told us in the meeting, that he plans to be there ten years, and after ten years, he's gonna buy twenty acres and move to LaRonde. Well, we don't want this property rezoned, and then the next person come and put a barroom there. It's just like two brothers. They don't, they rent the property out now. So, it's rezoned. You can have whatever you want there. And the first planning meeting, the zoning commission told us, once it's rezoned, if it's in, if it's in there, they can have it. You can't say, you can't have alcohol, you can't have marijuana, if it's allowed. You can't, it's not legal. You can't tell them that. So, we're asking this council to vote no. We've been there for almost fifty years. We've seen the good, we've seen the bad, we've seen everything. So, this is not a good thing. You know, you all have allowed, the council, maybe you weren't on the council at that particular time, but you all have allowed all these businesses to be changed in our residential area, and it's causing a problem for us. Thursday night, we heard music past twelve midnight. Saturday night, in the residential area, a band was at the barroom late at night. We have to stop this somewhere. We can't continue to let these businesses come in our neighborhood like this. It's wrong. Thank you.
What barroom is that? Is that a?
Say good evening first and foremost. My name is Reverend Gerald Tanner. I'm here on behalf of Pastor Samuel Brown and the Mount Vernon Missionary Baptist Church, located on one zero zero five Lavender Brown Drive. And I was asked to come. And I was asked to come and ask that you all would vote no to the rezoning of this section and more in concordance with what Mrs. Short was stating. Even though my pastor feels as though it is stated here to no alcohol or anything of that sort, but again, if he was to sell this place or something were to happen to him and some new owners come in, who's to say what they will do? Could be alcohol sold there or any particular thing of that nature. And again, my pastor just doesn't feel as though it would be conducive for the area. She brought up a point about years ago where there was a restaurant. Started out there, turned out to be a nightclub called Touchdown Lounge, which took the neighborhood over for a while, and we just don't feel as though it would be a conducive thing or a good thing at this time to go forward with. Okay?
I'll just note that that was a difference, uh, change so that if you see how the zoning commission moved.
Now, it's my property. I bought it. Yeah, I did say I'm gonna stay there for 10 years, so about 10, 15 years, because I'm a working man right now. I work, I'm trying to build me a, a business with my restaurant. After that, yeah, I wanna be in the country, but I ain't never said I was gonna sell my property. Don't put words in my mouth. You said I was gonna sell. I ain't selling nothing. We had to, so she really took me from my busy schedule to have a meeting with her, and we said that we gonna put on there no marijuana, no alcohol, 'cause I'm not trying to sell. And she said she was okay with it. I said, cool. I took my time out, went to the meeting, done everything. We got it on y'all paperwork where it's saying no alcohol, no, uh, marijuana. I'm okay with that. Even if it get granted today, I'm still not legal to put, sell alcohol or marijuana, even though marijuana not even legal right here, right now. But I'm not trying to sell it. That's the neighborhood. I don't want, and I'm gonna stay right behind it. So I don't want no club right next to me.
I've raised in the last meeting that I, I would worry about an enforceability, and, you know, if, if you're not running it right, zoning is forever until it's changed again. So that was my big, my big concern. The other issue is, we have recently discovered in another property that doesn't have the ability to sell alcohol, that they have found a way to be in event center or do something different or use someone else's license, and I'm not saying they're gonna do that. But who knows if the person you one day maybe lease it to is gonna try and be creative?
They don't lease it to nobody. It's gonna be straight.
But, I mean, that, that's the concern that, that I think that the council has to, and the neighbor, we have to listen to the, the neighborhood's concerns like that.
And then this building that I'm building, it's gonna be small, so it, it's just gonna be a, where you walk up to the window, order your, uh, stuff. Well, I'm not gonna have enough room to put no alcohol, store alcohol and all that. It's got enough alcohol around there anyway.
What's the issue with the expanded conditional use? I know you withdrew that, that idea.
I didn't want that. I wanted, I wanted regular, just like everybody else.
Why?
Just because, I, that's how I wanted it.
But if you can't have the zoning, would you accept the conditional use?
Uh-uh. I'll just keep on going until I can get it.
So, so right here, you're agreeing to no alcohol sales, no marijuana sales with the rezoning on the property?
Yeah, that's what's on there. I agree to that. We all, that's what I thought they agreed to, too. We went to, Mr. Kip, he was there, Councilman Kip was there. They all agreed to it. I stopped my day early to go to the meeting, and that's what she told me to put on. I said, well, put it on the paper.
Have you had any communication since that resolution?
One take, one takes message in reference to it.
Okay.
Back from Ms. Short, and that was basically it. And my understanding, when I left the meeting that day, and I sent Lacey an email asking that question, if the no alcohol sales and marijuana sales could be added as a special condition into this, it would be okay. And with that night at the planning and zoning meeting, it came up, they added it in to that condition that night. And that's the last of my official understanding that it was approved to be done that particular way, no changes.
Pierce, you've had people with a change of heart.
At the last meeting, we were not there, so we did not.
Right, right.
We were out of town.
We had a meeting.
Right.
We had the meeting prior to you leaving out of town.
That night, at that meeting, before I got up to speak, Dr. Brown got up and spoke. He talked about the touchdown, did not want to see another bar in that area. After he spoke, I came to the microphone.
And he agreed. He, he said he was with me.
And he said he didn't have, and he did state, he didn't have a problem with a business, he just didn't want to see no barroom in that area again.
Uh-huh.
I got up and I asked the planning and zoning committee, that with this particular sit, case that they were looking at with him, if that could be added as a special condition in there that he would know, would not be able to sell alcohol or marijuana if it's granted in the state, and they put that condition in there that that particular location with whatever done, can't be done there. And there was a whole bunch of different discussion going back and forth about it because that would be the first one of those conditions ever put on anything in the entire city.
But the zoning said at the first meeting that they could not, that that could not be, that it is, that you could not put stipulations, we asked that at that first meeting, did that be done? And the zoning said, no, you cannot say that the person cannot do that.
Well, they, the zoning committee put it?
At the last meeting, but we were at the first one.
Well, the, the city can not, can determine not to issue a liquor license if it's not allowed, correct?
Right. And, and what was being discussed, just to be clear about the, about the difference, uh, the different zoning tools that were discussed, and these were discussed in detail by the planning and zoning commission. Um, you had two options. One, you could do the higher zoning, um, and change it to the MXN, but put restrictions on it to, to, with the no alcohol and no marijuana, or you could do the lower zone and, and do the expanded conditional use, which allows the expanded uses of the property. And they, they debated back and forth. At the first meeting, they were only looking at the ECU, and that's why I think it's understood that they were expanding the use, they were not talking about restrictions then because they were talking about keeping it at the same zoning and just expanding the uses. At the next meeting, there was much more discussion between the two zoning tools, and what is the difference and how would that impact the neighborhood?
And that's, I told them that it had, in, in that area, it's not no little piece of law, it's a nice-sized law, I don't know if y'all passed through it. Right now, I can go in my restaurant, make me some money, then one day, when I feel like it, I, with, with my, uh, MX, MXN, mixed neighborhood, eventually I can put a office building over something right there and try to build up my community with some retail stores or something. I'm not trying to make no club and have to worry about people shooting right next to my house and all. That ain't no neigh, I wanna make the neighborhood better. A club won't make that neighborhood better. They been there 50 years, they ain't never tried to do nothing better than neighborhood. Trying to better.
So you're, uh, with this rezoning, you're good with the, right how it said, no alcohol sales and no marijuana sales, and it seems like, and it seems like majority of concerns are alcohol and marijuana sales from what I gathered tonight? Was that, was the meeting in the area?
No, no, no one wanted, no club, no one wanted no alcohol sales, no one wanted any marijuana sales. That was the?
That was the main concern of the issue.
Right.
And I don't want it either. Okay.
All right. Hold up, no, no, hold up, yeah, hold up. Hold up, hold on one second. You have to come to the mic to talk. Give us your name and address.
My name is Cavadas Cox. My address is 114 Caroline Drive. Um, I am a member at Mount Vernon. My only thing as far as him being rezoned as a business, like he said, he would just do his restaurant, and then several years later, he's gonna build another annex. The question is, even if he has the rezoning as an MXN, if he could, would he be able to get alcohol license after the fact?
No.
No, because it's?
So it'd have to go through the board for him to get alcohol license.
Right, right. And at the start of this, it's already put in for that particular property, that it's stating that that could have, not happen.
And no, no one can get that.
No one, no, no one.
Both areas, is that correct?
Correct.
Right, it's on both, both, on both pieces, no one can get it.
Only way, he'd have to come back and get everything redone.
Right.
Like through, not from everything, the planning, zoning, here, everywhere.
And this is gonna come right back up again, what's stated here on this paper tonight, that is, that's a condition that was placed in on this, that no alcohol, no marijuana.
Even if he sells it to Johnny Blow or whoever down the street?
No alcohol, no marijuana. They couldn't do it.
They would have to go through a full process. There would be notification of property owners, just like what we did with this, in terms of putting out the sign, in terms of running the newspaper ad, and in terms of mailing to all the adjacent property owners letters notifying them that there's a potential change. They have to go through the zoning commission and the meetings there, then they would have to come to the city council, and then they would have to go through the whole alcohol permitting process with the state and with the city council. So it's a, this goes into records management and it gets recorded with the clerk of court. This doesn't just stay with Mr. Ruffin, it stays with both the addresses of 712 and 706 Magazine until?
Forever.
Forever, yeah.
Okay. My, just to point out, so the MX, my problem is granting more use than even what you want to do with it. I, I understand what you wanna do with it, but what are we allowing for the rest of all time, right? I mean, you have any type of restaurant, retail sales, convenience store without gas or with gas, and that's probably not big enough for that, uh, vehicle cell, sales, uh, tattoo parlor with condition, with, uh, special exception, uh, sweet shop with special, special considerations. So you're allowing a lot of extra things that could happen, um, with a conditional use, that doesn't happen because it's just that one person while they owns that, own that property. But 30 years from now, if he's not, if he's not owning it, this property is owned for any of the uses that are in our, it may not be alcohol, but do people who live in a residential area want a lot? I mean, I think that Ms. Short stated that the, the lot catty-corner to it, it being mixed commercial was a bad decision, and so?
Which is a vacant lot right now.
Are we now relying on that, which could have been a bad decision, to do this one, and then we're gonna do the next one? Uh, it's just, it doesn't seem like smart planning.
The other comparison, though, that I would make is that this is a, a larger collector street, so it's more like Church Street or those, and those other areas have similar zoning of lots for the mixed neighborhood. The mixed neighborhood is meant to be a transition between residential and, and commercial.
It's just very spotty.
I agree.
That's the problem.
I agree.
With it. When you look at this map, it is all, there's light industrial around here. I mean, it is.
Some of that was?
How does a neighborhood grow when it doesn't have expectations of what it's supposed to be?
Right.
It's one thing I forgot, uh, Mary Short, 719 Magazine, I forgot this. I'm listening to everything that you all are saying, and even Chris, what he's saying. Uh, and I'm, I'm getting totally confused because when you asked him, what about the conditional use, and he said he would not accept it. The thing that I'm gonna ask this council, I'm the owner of Burdys Floris, and this is an article that was taken from the newspaper, when we wanted to put a flower shop in the same neighborhood. We, only one person did not want that flower shop in the neighborhood, but because it was in a neighborhood, it came before the planning board, and the planning board denied it, stating that it's a neighborhood and the flower shop could not be there. But the council, like you all, voted it in as conditional. And this is what it said. It said, "The council granted Burdell Carter Hammond a conditional use permit to operate a flower shop in a residential zone area at 1303 Sun Lane. Ms. Carter requested for a zoning of the property R4 residual to B2 restricted business, and the zoning recommended denial." Then it came before the council, and the councilman reasoned that a conditional use permit for a flower shop would ease the boarding zones concerns. And you all granted it, but you granted it on condition. And this is what we're asking for, Chris. Granted, but granted with condition, 'cause you said he has to come back anyway. So we're saying if he closes restaurant? Come back, come back. Ms. Carter presented a petition signed by 225 neighbors in support of her flower shop. But you all still denied it, but the council passed it with condition. And this is the only thing we're asking, we, we, we want him to have his restaurant, but we want it with conditions. We don't want, he sell it or he die, God forbid, and someone come do something else with the property.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Bean.
I'm Edna Lee Bean. I do not reside in this area, but my late husband had a business, a barber shop business in this area, and we have a rental home adjacent to Mr. Ruffin's property. And, uh, even though I don't live here, I'm still concerned about the neighbors who live there, and I don't, wouldn't want marijuana or alcohol sold, and that's what I've always said to Mr. Ruffin. He was saying that he will not sell marijuana or, or alcohol. And, um, the last meeting we had with, with Mr. Andrews, my request was to find out if there can be a stipulation saying that he will not be able to sell marijuana ever, nor alcohol, or even after he relinquished his ownership, the person who purchased, uh, his business, will they not be able to do it? And, and that is what I'm saying. It's okay for him to own the restaurant, but I'm not in agreement to, uh, selling marijuana or alcohol, so if there can be some kind of stipulation saying that he will not be able to do so for the person who he sells the, the business to, so.
That's exactly what is proposed and before the council tonight with those stipulations.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Samuel Wilson. I stay right across the street from his property. I don't see a problem him putting a restaurant, we don't know, we don't smoke dope, we don't sell alcohol or whatever. He just wanna run his business, that's all, and I don't see a problem with it. You know, he's a good person. I mean, he, he don't smoke dope, he don't, we, none of us, you know, I, I, I don't see a problem with him just trying to make him a business. I just don't see it. And I stay about 100 foot from him. Yeah, I don't, I mean, and I see him every day coming in and working, do his yards and stuff. I, I don't understand why it's so hard for him to get his, and run his business, get his business started. Because basically, where I stay at, right across the street from him, we don't have a problem with him. We don't have a problem with him building his business. You, all right, the council already says no alcohol, no drugs. Okay, that's, that's the done deal. No alcohol, no drug. So what's the problem with him doing what he got to do? The, the, the better himself? I mean, we don't see a problem. We got, we petition, we, we done signed papers and stuff, trying to get him, get him on his feet, you know, just try to help the young guy. Just try to help him. And, and I don't know, I ain't, I, I'm not against nobody, I'm not saying nothing bad about nobody, but let this man get on, do what he have to do to get on his feet and do his thing. Thank you.
That's the condition that was put in. No alcohol sales, no marijuana. Even if he sells this property, that's still stuck with that condition that's on it, no alcohol, no marijuana.
That's really understandable, but he don't, I got people walking on his property. I feel like people walking on his property.
I understand what you're saying.
Smoke or whatever, so, you know, that's just the way he are. He ain't key, not a, a person like that, you know, to, to, to affiliate with drugs or alcohol. He don't drink, he don't smoke, he don't nothing.
Go ahead, Larry.
My name's Larry Short, and I live at 1404 Harvest.
Speaking to the mic.
My name's Larry Short, now, Junior, and I live at 1404 Harvest Street in Hammond, Louisiana. This same neighborhood, and I know about this property, and, uh, I see nothing wrong with him having a business. Uh, the thing that, that I'm concerned about as, um, a neighbor and someone that lives in that neighborhood, if there's no hidden agenda, and he gets to have his business without it being changed to a resident, rezoned, you know, why not accept that? That's supposed to be good, that's what you want. But he says, no, I deny. I'll just keep coming back until. I'll just keep coming back until I get it." What's the hidden agenda?
You ain't thinking, because I just said that he, that ain't no hidden. Ain't no hidden agenda. I just said, I said, "I'm going to start my business, run my restaurant when I get, get established." If the, and then, let's just say, the restaurant, I know the restaurant going to be good because the food is good. Why can't I put like a office spot right there? And she say, Ms. Alace is say, that's one of the main streets where we can put, uh, stuff like that. Don't they want the community to build up? I ain't asking for a commercial. I'm not trying to build no Fortune five hundred company right there. I'm just trying to bring stuff that the neighborhood need. If you really know Larry Short and all that, they got one of the same type of things that eventually, when I get some money, I want to put up. It's like a little plaza where they have like some stuff where the neighborhood can walk right up to and get little stuff. That's what they got, right there on Coleman Street, next to the school, something like that. That's what I, I can't, I can't afford it right now, but if my restaurant do good, maybe down the road, couple of years, I can build one like that. That's why I don't want no expanded conditional use. I, I want to be to get it what I want it.
Thank you for the explanation, and I, I believe you. I'm not saying I don't believe you. I'm just worried, you know, if, if you did expand conditional use and then later came and asked for rezoning to show that this is what it's going to be, and your neighbors are okay with what that building's going to look like.
I don't want to have to go through all that.
I get it.
This is a lot.
I get it, no, I know. We sit through these twice.
Oh, you know, I come to all of them. Yeah, it, it's a lot. I'd rather just be sitting down watching instead of be having to come up here and explain myself all that. It's much fun of watching other people go through.
All right, Mr. Short.
Yes. We had some, we had some signatures to be in petitions. But I'd like to say that I've been in that neighborhood for over fifty years, and I seen transitions. I've seen them, as my wife's very vocal, and usually I let her do the talking. But I, I have to admit that everything she said was true. We saw James Brown, it was, uh, started out with one thing, saying one thing, and it turned into something totally different. I used to sit on, on the porch, and people would run across there. You know, I mean, that guns firing and shooting. And, and even now, I get some, some of the same thing happening from two brothers down the street, see. I, I've seen this, and I've watched it, and, and, and at one part, I might have been part of it because I didn't know the Lord. I, I, I got saved, and, and God, God took all, all that stuff away from me, see. But we living in, in dangerous times now. People shooting, and, and everything. So, what I'm asking is that, you know, if you can get, you can achieve your, your, your goal, and it still remain a residential neighborhood, why not take advantage of it? If that's what you really want, why not pursue it from that perspective, see? It is, let me say this, several, well, it's been probably about two months ago. I was sitting on, on patio, and in, in the same area that where, where Chris, Mr. Griffin is, is talking about his restaurant and all that, they had, it's, it, by it being a mixed neigh, a mixed agenda, they had cars out there, and they, they, it was having, I don't know if it's a party or what, but loud, loud music and everything, and I'm sitting there, and I was trying to read, and, and all of a sudden, you know, I hear all this noise. I said, "We have a noise audience in the city." I call the police. I, I said, "We've got a, a noise audience," I said, "and they sent somebody out." They came out, and they were there about ten minutes, and they left. Music still going up. If it, we got a park over here and a park down there, it's a residential neighborhood, and I would like to see it to stay that way. The church is, is, Pastor Brown was here, the first, the, the, the first time when he talked, loud music over there affects the church over there. See, the old brother used to say, "A heap see but a few know." But I'm there, and I see it, and I'm, I'm displeased with it being, I'm in opposition with it being rezoned to resident, uh, uh, a mixed, a mixed category there. I would rather it stay residential. And again, if you can have what you want, you can get it, why change it? I'm going to leave on that note.
What, the, were you referencing where the loud music, is that Two Brothers, you said? Is that, that's the restaurant, or?
Two Brothers, yeah. It's, it's down, down the street. It's, it's a, it was started, supposed to be a, it was supposed to be a sweet shop, and it was rezoned, it was a business district, and that didn't make it. So, people do what they have to do. They, they, and it doesn't matter who it affects or how it affects them, see? And it's still there. I mean, I, people come and knock on my door, they, they get, you know, they, I said, "This, this is, this is crazy," you know? That's what they do, see? Right past this, right here. So, if we could do, it is, it is, but it will be a little bit past that right there. Yeah. You answered your question?
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
If he talking about me with the loud music, only one time I had loud music out there, and that's when I gave back to the community, about three thousand dollars. I done, I, I done barbecue, fried food, all that. We had slides on the mechanical bull for the kids and everything. Police came over there, they see I had the permits and all that for the June tenth block party, which we're going to do another one this year. They, they okay because I, I get everything done right, had the police there and all that. And that's this flyer right here. I give him back, I'm trying to make it, you know, to, that, I want it to be a hood, I want it to be a neighborhood.
All right. Public hearing, item number five.
An ordinance to approve a request by Christopher Ruffin, owner to rezone Lot B, Block One of Pine Ridge Edition, located at seven zero six Magazine Street, from RS dash three to MX dash N in accordance with the survey by William Bodine, PLS dated one thirty-one twenty-two, Z dash two zero two-two, dash one zero, dash zero zero, one one three, with the following conditions. One, no alcohol sales. Two, no marijuana sales. Recommended approval by zoning commission five to zero.
This has all the same details of the property that we just spoke of. It is the lot that is just to the west and adjacent to seven twelve magazine, which we just spoke of. Seven oh six, within your packet, you'll find all the same materials with the exception of the photos. So, the photos show the surrounding properties slightly different than the photos that were in the seven twelve package.
Any other comments? Hammond City Council's regular session agenda, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, six forty-eight P M. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
And Councilman Leon.
Present.
Our prayer.
Most gracious, loving Father, we thank you on this evening. We come giving you glory and honor and praise that is due in your name. Thanking you, Father God, for this time of the season, of the year that we're in, of gift giving, Father God. Thanking you for the special gift that was given to us through the birth of your son, his life and his death. We just thank you for it right now. We ask you to continue to touch our hearts, touch our minds, continue to give us the peace that's a path of all understanding. Father God, we ask you tonight that everything will be done decent, order, pleasing in your sight. Therefore, you will get all glory, all honor, and all praise. I ask you to continue to bless the city of Hammond, the parish of Tanshaw, and the state of Louisiana. I ask you to continue to bless this council and their families. Continue to bless our city administration and their families. Continue to give us the knowledge and wisdom on how to continue to move our city forward. Father, I ask you to continue to bless our fire department and our city police as they continue to protect and serve us in this, in our streets and in our communities. Right now, Father God, we just thank you. We just continue to give you glory and honor and praise because without you, we are nothing. In your darling son, Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
By our pledge of allegiance, all veterans and active military, please render a proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, can I get an approval of our minutes from our November fifteenth, twenty, twenty, twenty-two meeting, please?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Final adoption of ordinance number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance to approve an expanded conditional use request by Haven LaFrance, owner, to allow for a mobile home located at three six zero five Delia Randall Road, per survey by Gilbert Sullivan, R L S dated, excuse me, three dash one, seven eight, zoned R M dash two, Z dash two zero two-two, dash zero nine, dash zero zero, one one one, with the following conditions. One, this is a personal right and expires upon a change in ownership of the property from the person originally granted the conditional use. Two, it meets all the requirements in the Unified Development Code, Article Three, Section Three, dash four. And three, the survey submitted is signed and recorded for the official lot of record. Recommended approval by zoning commission five and O.
Yes.
Good evening. My name's Deborah Swinson, and I am the at-large member for the Woodbridge Community Residence Association. I live at twelve Ravenwood Street in Hammond, Louisiana, in the Woodbridge subdivision. I happen to live on the area closest to this request for variance of the board members. But we received notice this, late this afternoon, that this was coming up for vote this evening. The members, we all tried to gather around, and I was unfortunately the only one that was able to be here. Had we had prior notice, we would have been here earlier, and we had not been down Delia Randall to see a particular sign or anything in the amount of time that it was there. They have asked me to request for an extension of the vote so that we can get together in that time to see how this particular variance would affect our community and our lives. If that is not granted, they have asked me to ask you all to vote against this as far as a concern out of our, you know, non-information, and also the fact that I know for a fact there's only a gravel road, one, one lane gravel road right behind my fence. There's a ditch on both sides, so that's all that's separating my property from that. You know, an easement, and then a ditch, and then the gravel road, and then another ditch, some property, and then the apartment homes, which are on, you know, Mallard. So, basically, we just ask that for the extension, and if not, we have a concern regarding also the number of mobile homes that could be put, you know, back there once one variance is, you know, requested, considering the lack of access and how it may affect our subdivision. And we do appreciate you allowing me to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we would ask the, the amount, extension of time, whatever that amount is, we're not, we don't have that information, but that's what we first asked for. And if not, we all, we ask that you all vote no. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Again, Don's a ring. Same thing as in the, the hearing we had before. We object to it, and we request denial of approval. Thank you.
Again, this is District Five. We have several, several people that are opposed to this. I've talked to others in Woodbridge that are opposed to this.
Get a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to deny.
Second.
Council, Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Final adoption of an ordinance, number two.
Final adoption of an ordinance to approve a request by Locaccio LLC to re-subdivide parcel two dash A dash one into parcels two dash A dash one dash A and two dash A dash one dash B of the Locaccio subdivision located at nineteen fifty-five Southwest Railroad Avenue, and to accept the dedication of Locaccio Drive and the cul-de-sac in accordance with a preliminary survey by David Patterson, PLS dated ten four twenty-two, Zone C dash eight, sub dash two zero two-two, dash one zero, dash zero zero, one nine A. Recommended approval by the planning commission.
Anyone on the public on this matter, again?
If you have any questions, I represent the.
Give us your name and address, please.
Michael Davis, Punchstall, Louisiana, three nine, two nine, three nine, two two nine, Joyner Lane. I represent the surveyor and the client, our client, Mr. Locaccio. I don't know if you had any questions as far as.
My, my only concern was the state of the road, taking in a road that may need repairs, but the engineer has stated that it's met to our standards and it's in good use. So, I don't have any questions for you.
She pretty much had all the answers, so.
Anyone else?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Final adoption number three.
Final adoption of an ordinance to approve a request by Erica Long, owner, to allow for a mobile home located at fourteen hundred Apple Street, per survey by Richmond Krebs, Krebs, PLS dated six three nineteen, zoned RS dash three, Z dash two zero two-two, dash ten, dash zero zero, one one four, with the following conditions. One, this is a personal right and expires upon a change in ownership of the property from the person originally granted the conditional use. Two, it meets all the requirements in the Unified Development Code, Article Three, Section Three, dash four. And three, the survey submitted is signed and recorded for the official lot of record. Recommended approval by the zoning commission.
Anyone else from the public on this matter? Any motion? And I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Final adoption of an ordinance, number four.
Final adoption of an ordinance to approve a request by Christopher Ruffin, owner, to rezone Lot A, Block One of Pine Ridge Edition, located at seven one two Magazine Street, from RS dash three to MX dash N in accordance with the survey by William Bodine, PLS dated one thirty-one twenty-two, Z dash twenty-two, dash zero five, dash zero zero, one zero, with the following conditions. No alcohol sales, no marijuana sales, recommended approval by the zoning commission.
Anyone else from the public on this matter? Any other concerns or questions from the council? Could you bring it on up, Ms. Moore? Been a lot of discussion on this matter. Again, as I stated, we, at the planning and zoning board meeting that night, with this particular ordinance going forth, the request was put in that there will be no alcohol sales, no marijuana sale. Everyone that spoke that night stated the same thing, that they didn't want no club or anything in the area, and that they wouldn't want to see that. Again, Ms. Bean even got up and spoke against it tonight. Her request was in it. Ms. Short had made her stance known against this. Again, we did have a meeting. We're both interested parties in this particular property, the owner and Ms. Short, along with Ms. Bean, we also met that day in Ms. Short's office. And when I left that meeting, before the request that was made that there would be no alcohol sales and no marijuana sale. After that meeting, I sent an email to Lacy to follow up with the city attorney on that, to look into that. The planning and zoning committee came back that night at that meeting, went through the ordinance, and when I stood to make my request after Dr. Brown spoke, said he did not want to see another club in that area. The planning and zoning committee said that this would be the first one that would be put in place with this particular ordinance with this condition placed in it. No alcohol sales, no marijuana sales. So, and I get a motion.
Is event center and a bar, is that included in MXN, or, I mean, I know it said alcohol, but that's event center and...
Bar is not included in anything, that would have to come before you...
Okay, alright, good, okay.
Hang on just a second, let me check and make sure. MX neighborhood does include number twenty-nine as a reception banquet hall.
Okay.
And with that being stated, Lacy, that still would fall under the restrictions that's set in with this particular property, right?
Yes, and so it would still pertain to there's no alcohol sales, there's no marijuana sales. I wish Andre was here to discuss that more, but the, I will also say that, given the circumstances that were mentioned, at the other location where there is a reception banquet hall. We have reception banquet halls throughout town that have no issues whatsoever. We have one in particular that is causing some challenges, and Andre is recommending that we kind of look at that definition of how we apply reception banquet halls. We have also had internal meetings with the alcohol tobacco control from the state and have a much better understanding of each role to play and how those reports are made. So that's the only information I have to provide for you on that.
Chris, do you have any issues with that? Okay. Okay, alright, well, I...
Add another restriction?
Yeah. I would, okay, so, I'd like, I'd need to make a motion amend, amend this right here.
You could just do a motion to approve it, including the additional.
With a condition, yeah, additional, okay. So I'm making a motion to approve with adding additional condition of not allowing a vent hall or a reception hall at the property.
Second in motion.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
No.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Final adoption of ordinance, number five.
Final adoption of an ordinance to approve a request by Christopher Ruffin owner to rezone Lot B, Block One of Pine Ridge Edition, located at seven oh six Magazine Street, from RS dash three to MX dash N in accordance with the survey by William Bodine, PLS dated one thirty-one twenty-two, Z dash two zero two two dash one zero dash zero zero one one three, with the following conditions, no alcohol sale, no marijuana sales, no marijuana sales, recommended approval by the zoning commission.
I make a motion to approve with adding the condition of no event center or reception hall to the property.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
No.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Introduction of ordinance is set for public hearing. Introduction number one.
Introduction of an ordinance to approve an expanded conditional use request by Candace T. Bush owner and applicant to allow for a mobile home located at five zero eight Washington Avenue per survey by William Bodine, PLS dated five eighteen twenty-two, zoned RS dash three, Z dash two zero two two dash eleven dash zero zero one one five, recommended approval by the zoning commission with the following conditions. This is a personal right and expires upon a change in ownership of the property from the person originally granted the conditional use. Two, it meets all the requirements in the Unified Development Code, Article Three, Section Three dash four. And three, the survey submitted is signed and recorded for the official lot of record, Lacy Landrill.
I'll try to keep this short since we've had a lot of discussion tonight. This was heard originally by the zoning commission on December eighth. It is here for introduction tonight, and then we go to public hearing on January tenth.
I wanted to ask you, Lacy, this one right here, was this the one that was tabled from the planning and zoning?
No, no sir, no sir.
Okay, what was the one, there was one of them tabled that day?
One nineteen Kansas Street was tabled.
Okay.
That one does not come before you until planning and zoning makes a recommendation.
Okay, I thought it was Washington too, okay.
No, this one, this one went forward. This one does have a survey and everything, the lot has the dimensions there that, and this is the one that did not have, though, Councilman Divatario, you were at that meeting. This one did not have the variance request because the size, the dimensions of the mobile home that Ms. Bush is seeking do fit within the lot that she has, and there's enough room fronting Washington Street to still allow for the setbacks and also allow for the mobile home that she wants for her door to face the street. So the other one was one nineteen Kansas and had both the variance and the expanded conditional use, and I believe that's part of the reason that they tabled it at that meeting. This one has a mobile home on three sides of it, both the north, the south, and the west. There are currently mobile homes. To the east, which is across the street, and there's pictures in your packet, is a single-family home. This lot is not in a proposed mobile home area, however, there are several mobile homes, not just adjacent to this one, but throughout this neighborhood.
Any questions from anyone else? Take a motion?
Just, District, this is in?
District three, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And the existing land is just vacant.
Okay, this is introductory, okay.
That's correct, it is just for introduction.
Okay, gotcha.
Motion to introduce?
I make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Introduction of orders, number two.
Introduction of an ordinance to approve an expanded conditional use by Willie J. Richardson, owner and applicant to allow for a mobile home located at one seven zero eight five East Hoover Street per survey, zoned RS dash three, Z dash two zero two two dash one one dash zero zero one one seven, recommended approval by the zoning commission with the following conditions. This is a personal right and expires upon a change in ownership of the property from the person originally granted the conditional use. Two, it meets all the requirements in the Unified Development Code, Article Three, Section Three dash four. And three, the survey submitted is signed and recorded for the official lot of record, Lacy Landrill.
This one was also heard at the most recent meeting on December eighth. It is just for introduction tonight. This location is in District One. It is an existing vacant lot, the original home that was here for many years burned to the ground, and so they are hoping to rebuild and start with a mobile home. It is a large lot in terms of its width, and so there is no need for the variance for the front door facing the street. This is also in a proposed mobile home area. So not only is this lot, but all the lots surrounding and adjacent to it are also in the proposed mobile home area. The nearest intersection to this is one block, a very short block down, and there is a mobile home at both locations of that intersection as well, including one that was more recently approved within the last year.
Can I get a motion to introduce?
Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Thank you, Lacy. Resolution number one.
A resolution to approve the mayor to enter into a contract with Roofing Solutions for seventy-four thousand forty-six dollars for a roof replacement at the Police Fire Fleet Building, RFP twenty-three dash thirty-eight, Chief Fokes.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
So I sent y'all an email yesterday stating exactly what this was, basically, at twelve ninety Southwest Road Avenue. There's the building to the back, you'll notice, kind of where that's where our train facility is being built at this time. There's a building back there that needs a roof repair, so this is what the, that's for. And we actually got some pretty good interest into it, and they're all fairly close as far as cost-wise, so I'm just asking that you go with our lowest bid and allow us to get this roof repaired.
Anyone from the public have a question or concern?
Sorry, Chief, will you tell, again, I know you put in the email to us, but where are the funds coming from? Just so it's public record.
Yeah, so the funds will be coming from our, the millet in the building maintenance, and a portion of the millet account.
Thank you.
Sound, Nicholas, thirty-six oh seven, Highway one ninety, West Hammond, Louisiana. Looking at the resolution, how many companies have been approached, you know, been approached for this roof?
So it was a bid, looks like it was a bid, and there were four bids on it.
Four bids?
Requested proposals.
And this was the...
Lowest one, the highest was ninety-eight, went from ninety-eight, eighty-seven, eighty-seven, and seventy-four.
Is this a local company?
I don't know that.
Roofing Solutions.
Baton Rouge.
Sorry?
It looks too that there were seven that were present at the pre-bid meeting, so it was probably sent out to more, and it was also advertised on our website and in the newspaper. There were only four that submitted bids out of those seven who had come to the pre-bid meeting.
Okay, so I just, you know, want to make sure under my understanding that it was already sent out by four or more. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to back that up, this was actually advertised as a public bid, so it got advertised in newspapers and sent out, so basically anybody who, anybody could bid on that who did that kind of work, so...
And you said all the funds came from the millet, you said, or a portion of it?
These funds are coming from the millet.
Okay.
The other thing I'll say is this is the same, when we say it's put on our website, it's put on our website, but that's kind of the small space. It's also put out on a bid software website, so it does go a little more, it's broadcast a little further than just like the local...
Was this just, was it just an old roof, or was some of the damage, anything with the hurricane insurance, or was just way out of...
It's just a very, very old roof.
Okay, gotcha.
Anyone else? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, all, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Resolution number two.
A resolution to authorize the Hammond Ponchatoula Sunriseers Rotary Club to obtain a waiver of the open container law on Saturday, February eleventh, twenty twenty-three, from ten AM to three PM for the chili cook-off with the downtown parking lot on the west side of the railroad tracks and bounded by Coleman Avenue, Railroad Avenue, Morris Avenue, and the railroad tracks. Deek, Debl...
Great job. It's as close as most people get, but my name is Deek W., I'm at forty-two five thirty-two South Range Road in Hammond. We'd like and support, well, the city has supported the chili cook-off. This will be the third annual chili cook-off for our Rotary group, and all of the proceeds go back to the community.
Anyone in the public have any other questions or concerns on this matter? Any questions or concern from the council?
Is it just beer?
Just beer, correct.
And people have to have wristbands?
For the beer?
Yeah.
Uh, wristbands for the, for the all-you-can-eat chili, but we check IDs at the, our members are the ones serving the beer, so we're pretty, we're not pretty stringent, we're very stringent.
Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Resolution number three.
A resolution, did I read the wrong resolution? A resolution to authorize the Hammond Ponchatoula Sunriseers Club to obtain a waiver of the open container law on Saturday, February eleventh, twenty twenty-three, from ten AM, excuse me, until three PM for the chili cook-off within the downtown parking lots on the west side of the railroad tracks and bounded by Coleman Avenues, Coleman Avenue, Railroad Avenue, Morris Avenue, and the railroad tracks. Deek?
It's not two days.
Double U.
Double...
Double U.
Double U.
That's easy.
Not when you look at it. But if we're going to sell beer, we'd like the waiver for an open container between ten and three.
Sounds good.
Right.
Anyone from the public?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. W.
Thank you.
Resolution number four.
A resolution to authorize the Hammond Regional Arts Center to sell and serve alcohol on Saturday, February fourth, twenty twenty-three, from six PM until ten PM for the art of the cocktail within the boundaries of Morrison Alley Park between Cypress and Cherry Street and the Hammond Regional Arts Center located at two one seven East Thomas Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one, Jordan Kinning.
Thank you, ma'am. Hi, I'm Jordan Kinning, I'm the board president of the Arts Center, and this is one of our three main events for the year, what keeps us going. We're anticipating close to four hundred ticket sales, so that, you know, gives us a pretty big amount of traffic in downtown. A lot of our patrons of this event do feed over into the neighboring bars and restaurants for that event. It is a closed event, so, you know, we won't have really any outside visitors coming into the tent or in the building without being checked for IDs and wristbands.
Any questions from anyone in the public? Any questions or concerns from anyone from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Resolution number five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A resolution to authorize... A resolution to authorize the Hammond Regional Arts Center to obtain a waiver of the open container law on Saturday, February fourth, twenty twenty-three, from six PM until ten PM for the art of the cocktail within the boundaries of Morrison Alley Park between Cypress and Cherry Streets and the Hammond Regional Arts Center located at two one seven East Thomas Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one, Jordan Kinning.
Yes.
Same thing.
Same as before.
All right. Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Resolution number six.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, DOTD, through which DOTD will pay one hundred percent of the costs to construct a roadway lighting system at the I-12 and US five-one-B interchange, provided that upon completion, the city will assume ownership of and all liability and responsibility for this system, including all future maintenance and operation costs. Charles Barsher.
We're getting lights. This is exciting. Um, we're of course talking about the interchange where we've installed the the three roundabouts. I say we, the city, the parish, DOTD, a long time ago, so this has been a long time coming. This is very standard for DOTD. They will build the infrastructure. Their costs will also include the design, so they're going to design it, they're going to build it. Our responsibility then becomes to maintain it, um, just like we do other lights or lighting systems on on roads that we share.
Anyone from the public have any questions?
Who pays for the utility, sorry, Kim?
That would be us. That would be part of the maintenance.
So it's part of us, that's part of the maintenance.
Oh, no problem. Anyone else? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second. Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles. Uh, resolution number seven.
A resolution to approve the appointment of John Exnicious. Representing the largest assessed property owners to the Downtown Development District Board for a two-year term from January first, twenty twenty-three, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Michelle Kendall.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, as I submitted in your packet, um, we do have three, well, we actually have four um open seats for our Downtown Development District Board of Directors. And presented to you tonight, we have um three of those large assessed property owner seats, um, starting with John Exnicious. And you receive the information ahead of time. Um, if you have any questions for John Exnicious, he's not here tonight, unfortunately. But he is an active member, he's a current member, and you uh were supplied with his board activity to date in your packet.
I I made it pretty clear earlier in the past about uh appointments that are looking to get appointed or appointed in 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 uh any of the city-serving uh boards to be at attendance, at attendance at the meetings when they're getting appointed. I think it's an honor to serve on these boards and uh and I would I would like to see that. And so just wanted to make that very clear again.
He was made aware of the meeting.
Yeah.
And um he uh unfortunately was not able to make it due to a prior commitment.
I think John has come before us at least twice, so uh I think we're all familiar with him. And I did appreciate your uh summary of his attendance and the other person who's up, um, who's a repeat nomination. So we certainly have seen John before. Thank you.
Any other question from anyone? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
No.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Resolution number eight.
A resolution to approve the appointment of Evan Singer, representing the largest assessed property owners to the Downtown Development District Board for a two-year term from January first, twenty twenty-three, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Michelle Kendall?
Again, um, this is a large assessed property um owner seat and um Evan Singer is here tonight. You're provided um all the information that he meets the requirements to continue to serve on the board and his board activity. Um, Evan, if you'd like to um kind of speak to the council, you're more than welcome.
Thank you, Michelle. I'll just say it's an honor to serve and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Evan. Uh, appreciate you showing up here tonight, taking the time to make it. Heard a lot of good things about you on there and uh thank you for your service.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Resolution number nine.
One second. A resolution to approve the appointment of Kaylee Norton, representing the largest assessed property owners to the Downtown Development District Board for a two-year term, January first, twenty twenty-three, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Michelle Kendall?
This is the last um seat for the largest assessed property owner. Um, currently John Daniel Gayran is on our board, serving um the seat. Um, and he is um rolling off of the board effective at the end of this month. Um, so we received a nomination for um Ms. Kaylee Norton to, and her nomination was received by Regions Bank. Um, you're, um, were given um all the information as that was supplied to you in your packet. Um, she is also here tonight, um, if you have any questions for her. Um, she is and and would be a new member um to our board, so um, like I said, she's here tonight and um you're more than welcome to approach if you'd like to speak to the council. Hello.
Hello.
I'm Kaylee. Um, I have, I guess, I'm terrible at this. Um, I graduated from Southeastern and have been a small business owner since two thousand eleven in Hammond. And um I'm really passionate about our city and about it, the growth and everything that the DDD is doing, and I would love to be a part of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Kaylee, for coming. Thank you for what you do to the community. I'm glad you made it here tonight and appreciate you taking the time to introduce yourself to everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you. Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Um, this, and I know we've received uh your letter, Michelle, regarding the other, the west side property owner seat, not having received enough applications. I wanted to mention this to the council. If we decide we want to amend the agenda and and ask for this, it's just my thoughts that perhaps we send it back to the DDD to open up applications again for, you know, fourteen more days or whatever your period is. Um, because it's all kind of new grounds for us that we haven't, uh, you've never had the council appoint someone. As we all know, I sent an email like, you know, clarification, are we supposed to pick someone from the west side? But not necessarily. And what better people to actually appoint someone to DDD than the actual business owners? And and try and follow that statute, perhaps just with a lot of things going on with the DDD in the past uh month or so, and then with Thanksgiving and everything, it just wasn't enough time for people to get their packets together. And so um maybe it would be a good idea to allow you guys another opportunity to um present nominees to your board so that they can have some input. That's just my thoughts. If anybody, if you like that idea, I would make a motion to amend the agenda to add a resolution to request the DDD to open applications back up for the west side property owners.
So, so, go ahead.
Can I, just for clarification, so we would open up applications again with those, um, and that, the nominees that we would receive, they would receive five letters, come back before you, or they would just be presented to our board?
Whatever your normal procedure is.
Would be presented to the council.
Yeah. Comes back to us, yeah.
Okay.
I think that's a great idea. Make the motion.
I I made the motion to amend. If anybody has anything else to say.
Got a question?
Yes, so what are options right now? Our options are, what you said right now, are we leave it like it is for the council to make recommendations or?
We would appoint and approve someone who just meets the three qualifications.
Okay.
Um, it, from the DDD's, from the letter Michelle sends us. The council would find someone.
Beginning of the year, that seat will be vacant, so we'll have a board of six, um, because the west side property owner, which is currently, um, uh, Brian Wong is, holds that seat. So he is rolling off at the end of this month, so in January, that seat would be vacant.
We weren't going to vote on this tonight anyway, so, yeah, you weren't going to get someone at the earliest until the first meeting in January anyway.
And then just to.
It's an opportunity to give us more options.
Well, let DDD, the the people invested and and who their board members are have another chance to come up with a couple of people for a motion to choose from. So that's the motion to amend the agenda. It has to be unanimous to add it as something that we do.
Second, second.
Sorry, Michelle.
I was just going to say, basically, the feedback that we did get was that they didn't have enough time. So with the interested parties that we had, um, it, giving them another fourteen days if we follow what our legislation sort of outlays, um, as it, as it says, then that would likely give them the time that they had requested before the, um, before the, they were actually due.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
And now I make that motion.
Now, second.
Do you need me to repeat the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
The amendment that was uh approved was a resolution to direct the DDD to open up nomination periods for the west side property owners. Does that work?
Yeah. I mean, I don't know if you need to specify the time period.
I just said the period, whatever it is y'all are supposed to use.
It's fourteen days in our legislation. Effective.
If it passes tomorrow.
Okay.
You want to do it over the holidays?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, yeah, let's push that out.
Stay till January.
I don't know how big of a rush you guys are in.
Let's start it till January, let's do it right, yeah. Yep.
That way you're not in this boat again.
Yep.
Yeah. So effective January first.
So you made the motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
In your second. Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reports, mayor?
I'll make it very quick. Uh, just a reminder that the Christmas parade is this Friday, starts at five-thirty. Um, the train is rolling on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And this weekend will be the last weekend of that, since next weekend is actually Christmas. So the city offices will be closed on that Friday, the twenty-third, and on the following Monday, the twenty-sixth. Will then be closed again for the New Year's holiday on Friday, the thirtieth, and on the second, January second.
Thank you.
Trash, though, will actually be picked up regularly from what we've been told by Waste Pro. So because of the way that the holidays fall on the weekend, they intend to pick up our schedule as as normal.
All right.
How you doing? Uh, I can speak. Okay, how you doing? Um, I got a question and maybe.
Name and address.
Cedric Dunells, one oh six Magazine Street. Um, I'm just sitting here, was listening to the whole thing when they were complaining about, you know, him putting something down there. All the music come from off the other end, nowhere near where Chris, you know, live. But I also have a concern about, okay, from, say, Hoover Street all the way to the dead end of MC Moore Road. Down that road, how many houses do you think they have with only three fire hydrants? So it goes from Hoover to maybe Mr. Art, uh, Mr. Uh, Walter Art House.
Mm-hmm.
That's the last fire hydrant. Now, you've got almost twenty other houses.
Past that.
Past that. So I'm I'm wondering, if a house or something catch on fire down there, how they going to put it out? With hosepipe? Just a question. Not being a smart, not being smart, but just a question.
That's not a question to me. I mean, it'd be administration right there that, I mean, we don't put the fire hydrants out.
I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, I'm I'm just trying to find out.
Um, so Lacy, want to direct him to where he needs to go?
The fire chief is still here and he can answer that question for you right there.
Good timing.
Just to answer your question, so uh it's, we have lots of solutions for that. So uh we serve a much broader area than just the city limits, and even some of the city limits uh doesn't, is, is, houses are a little bit distant from a fire hydrant. So every one of our frontline pumper says a thousand gallons of water. So when that truck pulls up, it has approximately five to ten minutes of water onboard that they can utilize to extinguish a fire. We send three of those, so that's three thousand gallons of water. So you start adding up, that's fifteen minutes worth. Uh, most of the time, if it's just a, you know, room and contents or something like that, that first and second engine's uh water capacity actually will take care of the fire. With that being said, we also carry a thousand feet of supply hose on every apparatus. So with those three trucks, I can lay a little over a half a mile worth of hose to to get to a hydrant if I really need to. Um, that rarely happens for residential fires, because the water we actually bring with us is sufficient to take care of the issue. Um, now with respect to, you know, you know, needing hydrants and things like that, that's always something that that always needs to be looked at as the city grows. And that's, you know, that's my job to to look at that. Most of the time, when you have new businesses and such come in, hydrants are added into the system uh on, you know, based on that, that, the the apartment complex, for instance. Uh, we've had several apartment complexes built within the city. They actually, hydrants were part of the infrastructure that they brought in, so they actually paid for that infrastructure on their own. So there was no cost to the city to actually add to that.
Yeah, but I thought normally when it's in the city and it's uh something supposed to be like taken care of or something or what? See, them houses have been there.
Yeah.
Just a question.
As far as fire hydrants added? I I'm not sure, because like, most of our hydrants that have been there have been there a long time. So, you know, they they were put in when the actual system was either established or upgraded or something like that, which could be, could be several years, you know, could be fifty years sometimes, uh, just depending on the age. Uh, you know, we've talked about the sewer system many times of of its age and and things like that. It always gets looked at, that's something that we do on a regular basis, is is check our hydrants. But we also, we we don't rely on hydrants, because it takes time to establish that, you know, and you 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 lay a hose to the hydrant, it takes time to hook it up. We can't wait to begin a fire attack, just waiting to hook up to a hydrant. So that's why we put, bring water on our trucks.
So certain places don't get fire.
It's not they don't get them, they're just not available, or they haven't been put in, so it's just something that we have to deal with.
So I guess you're saying you evaluate the area and see if there's one in need in the area, so I guess y'all look at it occasionally, yearly or something, uh?
Right, and and like I said, most of the time in residential, it's not that big of an issue, because we bring enough to do the job and we have enough supply hose that if, for some reason, we need more water than what we brought with, we can get to any hydrant that we need. Uh, what we also have is is the eva, uh, ability to call in other fire departments in rural areas that have tankers. And so they'll show up with three, or three or four thousand gallon tanker. Uh, instead, so instead of us going back and forth or calling more of our engines in, we'll just call the tanker in. And and usually that that takes care of the issue.
So basically, I'm going to cut y'all off.
No, you're good.
Basically, it's up to you guys to say, okay, well, we need a hydrant, right?
For the most part, i- if if we say, yeah, hey, we, you know, we have a problem, let's say, um, and and really that wouldn't even be the case if they put in a large subdivision or maybe put a bunch of houses in. We would, we would work with with the developer to add hydrants uh with that.
On the developer's?
Yeah, on the developer's dime, correct. So, and and we've had several developments that that came through, um, and that's, we're. Not not MC Moore, just throughout the city, that uh, that we've actually, you know, they'll come to us and we'll say, hey, this is, this is what we need, or uh this is what we want. Uh, for instance, uh, some of the apartment complexes, we did some adjustments with them where, you know, they may have had two fire hydrants and we said, no, we want three. Uh, and, you know, usually they'll, they'll take care of it, uh, and and take care of us as far as those developments. And, you know, usually they'll take care of it and take care of us as far as those developments. Now, in residential, one thing that could also be a limiting factor is where the actual main is. So if you have a road that's, you know...
Straight line.
Yeah, a straight line. The main, the actual water main might only go three-quarters of the way down, and it might go to a smaller diameter pipe. So I can't put a fire hydrant on a two or three inch. It's just, it's really not going to do us any good. Normally, what we have is six-inch, six-inch or bigger is what we put our fire hydrants on. So, you know, maybe that's the reason why they didn't put any fire hydrants down, because maybe there's a, maybe the actual, the feed feeding those houses is too small.
I'm quite sure that's what it is.
It compensately be that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any council report?
I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Lacey, over there on Brandy Lane, still getting the calls on that. I just wanted to follow up with the first house on there to get cleaned up some from the storm and secured of some way. Just wanted to follow back up on that issue. Also, since we're having a lot of rain supposedly tomorrow, just wanted to put a reminder in there for that lighted drive area. It seems like when it rains real hard or something, there may be a switch or something to be flipped on that treatment plant out, that sewer station out there possibly, because the guys that are there said when they came out, it all went down.
No, that is lift station thirty-nine. It actually services the Wind Dixie Old Sunshine Distribution Facility. That was just a fluke accident at that point. The first motor went out on that lift station. They got it restarted and thought it was okay. Then the second one went out, and they were worried about continuing it that way. So that's why they switched it over to emergency bypass. That was just something that broke
Okay.
by chance. It didn't have anything to do with the rainwater.
Okay.
The other contributions that are back there is Main Creek, and I think that, you know, causes some issues. I don't know where that is in terms of the drainage districts project of cleaning out everything, but I can check with Kaylee Gates tomorrow and get an update.
Let's do that, please, and just double-check with the guy and then to make sure, because, you know, with the water issue with the sewer, it's up and running, because, you know, it seems like we're expecting a lot tomorrow. And, you know, if they need to make any kind of double passes, that'd be nice or something, just because, you know, I just don't want all the water backing up in their houses over there when it rains. Whatever they did, it worked and flushed right on out afterwards, but, you know, it got up there. So I just wanted to make sure, made a note of that. And then I'll just keep an eye on those R.C. Martin lights. I'd be happy to see them on, so. All right, thank you.
Any other council reports? Well, like, this time, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. This will be our last council meeting for the year, and our next council meeting will be in January. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.